Maybe take a little half-session break and dive into a topic and spend a little bit more time on it than just reading that. So that's what I've sort of planned out. We'll finish up sixty-eight, and then we'll spend some time on that. And if we can, we'll get back to seventy-three. If not, we'll start again with chapter seventy-three next week. So in chapter sixty-eight, we had finished the little story, parable of the people, the agricultural farmer people, who had sort of become greedy and then sort of had seen the error of their ways and then turned around. And we talked a little bit about them acknowledging their shortcomings and then asking God forgiveness. So. Okay, so yeah, they ask, maybe something better will come from this, sort of accepting God's plan of how things work out. That's where we went on a little bit of a tangent.
Can I just interrupt you all? The school is doing a fire drill this morning. I know, I'm stunned too. So it'll take a minute or two. We don't need to leave the building, but just so you know when it goes off.
All right, sounds good. So then there's a description of hell and punishment, followed by a description, or just an allusion to paradise or heaven. There will be gardens of bliss for those who are mindful of God. So not a very detailed description here. There are other places where there's some more description. But almost always, things are paired. So we had a reminder of hell and then followed by a promise of heaven also. A lot of times, these things are sort of paired as options to remember, like that both of these possibilities are out there. And then there's a bunch of rhetorical questions that start coming up. And one is, before we go through them, just remind ourselves of the setting. So we're in essentially pre-Islamic Arabia, right? Islam has just started to arrive. People are starting to get the message, at least hear it in their ears, where they're not really feeling it in their hearts. This was a largely idolatrous society. And so this is what these verses are sort of hammering on. So rhetorical question number one, should we treat, we being God, should we treat those who submit to us as we treat those who do evil? So asking, no. Does, should we, should God treat the people who behave properly, who believe in God, the same way as those who don't? Sort of a rhetorical question. And then, what is the matter with you? On what basis do you judge? And so this is sort of, again, poking at the people in the town, in Mecca, right? Who are making their own judgments off their own, essentially their own egos, right? Or their own desires, rather than what is right or what God's will is. And then the next question, do you have a scripture that tells you that you will be granted whatever you choose? So you want to behave as you wish, where do you get that volition from? Do you have proof for that type of thinking or behavior? So again, an allusion that scripture is important. Because human beings, while human beings have a light within them, in the Islamic tradition, that would be sort of the breath of God, this ruh. For those of you who've studied a little bit of Hebrew, that sort of sounds like the word ruah, which means, I think, spirit or breath in Hebrew, and similarly in the Arabic. So yes, human beings have that. Human beings have been gifted with intellect to try to figure out right and wrong. And there's like a range of opinions that Muslim scholars and philosophers have thought about. Like, can human beings figure out wrong and right for themselves? And there's sort of like a spectrum of yes, no. It'll be good for your insurance. Was it proof that we had or use it?
It is fun. Well, how does it sum you moral, good people who do not believe in God?
So belief is really important.
Yeah, I see that.
It depends on who you ask, right? So you'll find people who, I'm gonna use the word narrow interpretation versus broad interpretation, as opposed to like, I try to stay away from saying, oh, it's a conservative or a liberal. Because those words in our contemporary world have so much political connotation with them that they don't really, they're not a good fit. So I use narrow interpretation, meaning somebody who reads scripture and doesn't want to make too much interpretation from it. Literal is a way of looking at it, but doesn't want to read too much into it. And then there are people who have a more expansive view and understanding, you know, holistic. And they will maybe try to take into account a holistic understanding. They'll say, there says verse in this whole text, the whole text has a theme, an ethos. How do I interpret this verse, this chapter in that way? I think those who have a narrow interpretation will say that the most important thing is belief. And without belief, that the works, the efforts, the deeds have not no meaning, but diminished meaning. And then the other people will say that we don't know. So there is a Muslim scholar, it's like a middle-aged Muslim scholar, he's like in his forties, down in Georgetown, Guy and Jonathan Brown, he's a convert, he's a professor at Georgetown. Being a convert, most of his, I don't know if any of his family, like his parents, siblings, things like that, I don't know if they converted or not. But he made a lecture at one of the Islamic conferences, sort of talking about this issue of this concept of salvation. And it's really, it's important for everybody, but it really hits home for converts because they have close family, parents, siblings, who have a different faith tradition now, right? And how do you understand and reconcile that? So the way he has understood, and he's a relatively, if one used the term I used earlier, narrow, strict, he's sort of a more by-the-letter-of-the-book type of interpreter, I would say. And so he sort of goes, but he's a very scholarly person. So he kind of goes through the study, and he says that there are these, these, these things that God gives us in the Quran, that you have to believe, and you show your belief through how you behave. Because there are definitely, we'll get to a verse sometime in the next little bit here, because it's near the end of the Quran, that talks about people who pray, but then like deny orphans like their sustenance, things like that. So there's a problem there. So it's not just ritual or professed belief, there has to be lived belief too. But then everywhere in the Quran, there's also things about that God does not, God loves His creation, God is just, God does not wrong His creation, and God is merciful. So these are sort of these overlying themes that are repeated constantly. And so he sort of comes to the point where he's like, I don't know, but I know God tells me He doesn't wrong any of His creation. And so I have no, me as a mortal human being with limited intellect compared to God, have no right to make an interpretation that says, you're in or you're out. That is a human being, a creation of God, putting limits on God's mercy. And God is saying, God is most merciful, God is most passionate, God is all just. So there's an arrogance that belies somebody who says and behaves in a way that is pious and is good, but then sort of makes judgment calls on another. So that these things are more of a self-test. Like, you're gonna read this, you're gonna make a judgment call. And to the even more, not anymore, but additional fact is no Muslim can ever say that they are guaranteed or they will be going to heaven. There's no Muslim that will, that should ever say that. There are definitely, there will definitely be people who lived Muslim lives and will spend time in hell, you know? And there will be people who go to heaven. So belief does not guarantee, and belief is important. And salvation is a gift. It is not earned. But you make your best efforts to sort of show God, be thankful toward God for that. So that's a pretty long-winded answer to A, I don't know, and B, we don't know. And then C, the sort of on-the-ground reality is there are people who do feel that they can make that judgment call. And there are people who, I think, are much more cautious about that. One should be pretty scared to make that judgment call, no one. My thing we know, in all traditions, there are people who have figured out that they are written in, they read the scripture and they say, oh, that's me, this is you, something could be you. But I think his understanding, his way of articulating it was really, really positive. That it doesn't negate the importance of belief, the importance of righteous action. But it also cautions us from saying, even if you believe and you pray and you do rituals and you help out at the shelter, that doesn't mean you know where you're ending up. And meanwhile, the person on the other side doesn't need it. And we'll sort of get to, stories are always helpful for these types of things, right? So there's, we talked about hadith in the first session, hadith are these sayings of the prophet. And so there's a story that he tells, and it's not, I don't think it's a person that was like in town, but it's sort of a general story. So there was a woman who was not known to be, let's say, a very pious person or a good behaving person or something like that. But she saw an animal that was very thirsty one day and took out her shoe, got some like drinking water and gave it to the animal. Not out of, not out of any desire, didn't want to get affection from the animal, nothing. It was just like, a creature of God is suffering, I'm going to help, I'm gonna make efforts to try to help it and alleviate its suffering, that's it. And the story goes on to say that this person was granted heaven, granted paradise because of that moment of like utter selfless service. Like there was no, oh, somebody's gonna see me, oh, I hope God rewards me for this. None of that. It was just complete given service of that moment of the heart. So these sort of stories, you know, are sort of told, I think, to help give people hope because we all know we have shortcomings. We know our shortcomings more than anybody else. And it's possible to become hopeless in God's grace, right? I think sometimes people get, can get caught up in the works part of it and start to say like, oh, I'm not worthy. I mean, this happens, I mean, I've known people who, let's say, have become not very observant of the prayer, of the daily prayers. And they sort of want to become more observant, but they're embarrassed to, they're shy to, it's sort of like, oh, I'm too far gone. And then there's other stories that say basically, there's never too far gone. So I think all these types of stories, they help develop the mindset, the heart set, the theology without like the formal words. And in short, it's, a Muslim should be sort of in between hope and fear. You should never be so confident that you're saved, they become sort of like, I don't need anything. And if you do get to that state, then maybe there should be a little bit of fear in your heart that actually what you're experiencing is arrogance, and so there's a problem there. And then if you are sort of at a despair point, there should be reminded that every verse, every chapter starts with God is most merciful, God is forgiving. And so hopefully that helps them. Okay, so then, have you, so it asks, do you have scripture for the way you're behaving or your belief? Have you received from us, from God solemn oaths binding on the day of resurrection that you will get whatever yourselves have decided? So God makes lots of oaths in the Quran. God swears by the sun, the stars, the mountains, the ocean, all kinds of things that we can see, that we can find tangible. It says like, those things that you find majestic. I am the Creator, I'm swearing by them that, and whatever the next statement would be. So the question here is, have, has the person who is making fun or rejecting the scripture here in pre-Islamic Arabia, have they received any kind of sort of special conversation with God that makes them confident in their behavior? Ask them, and this is sort of, this conversation happening with the prophet. So ask them, prophet, which of them will guarantee this? So do they themselves have some sort of power to guarantee life after death or things like that? Do they have partners besides God? Let them produce their partners if they say what they say is true. So remember, we talked a little bit about, at the, at that time, there was lots of sort of idols. By some accounts, over three hundred and sixty idols, so an idol for every day of the month year. And asking, can those partners that you associate with God, those things you call out, can they do anything for you? On the day when matters can become dire, and so this is judgment day, they will be invited to prostrate themselves, but they will be prevented from doing so. So like, we'll talk a little bit about this. This is the physical frustration on the knees, hands, nose, and forehead that Muslims will do during the prayers and that people will be sort of engaging in on judgment day and that these people will sort of not be able to do that. Their eyes will be downcast, they'll be overwhelmed with shame. They were invited to prostrate themselves when they were safe, but they chose not to. So like now there is an opportunity to, but people don't. And so movies are always good. They help kind of show things, even though they're not exactly accurate. So this is from the movie Malcolm X. So this is Malcolm X when he's in prison. He's not Muslim yet. And he's sort of being asked to start, to try to pray, and he's having difficulty getting to it. I thought it was like a good little clip that sort of highlights that challenge. That might be, is what is being. So I don't have video. But essentially, what he does is, I mean, he's being asked to pray. So like, get on your knees and pray. He's like, I can't, I've done too much, I'm just embarrassed. And he's like, I want to, but I can't. He sort of turns away at that moment. Denzel does a much better job of acting that out than I just said. But that's sort of what I thought was being sort of highlighted here. And that, you know, now is the opportunity to take your your own volition, your own agency, and remember God, and pray, and repent, and things like that. And then these things are sort of like, the prophets reminded here and a couple other places that your job is to remind, to share, that you don't have any ability to like change hearts. The changer of hearts is God. So it says, Prophet, leave those who reject this revelation to me, to God. We, God, shall lead them on a step-by-step in ways beyond their knowledge. So like, you've done your part, I'm not asking you anything more. Whether they change or not, that's a different story. I'll allow them more time for my plan, my decree is more powerful. Do you demand some reward from them that would burden them with debts? You're not asking, so you're not even asking them anything that is really difficult. You're not asking them to give up something that's gonna be very challenging. They feel that it's challenging because they see what they think of their livelihood is at stake, but it really isn't. There's like, if they were to follow it, there would be sort of greater riches to have to be. They just can't see the plan for them. Do they have knowledge of the unseen that enables them to write it down? Wait patiently, prophet, for your Lord's judgment. Do not be like the man in the whale who called out in distress. So you guys know who that is. Man in the whale?
Jonah.
Jonah. So Jonah is a prophet in the Islamic tradition. There's, his story is in the Quran. He is eventually, I mean, he's called, he leaves his calling in the Islamic tradition. He tries to leave his calling. And eventually God, he asks for God's help again, God forgives him, and he's sort of reinstated. So that's in fifteen seconds, the Jonah story. But God is sort of saying, don't leave your station, right? Be, don't follow Jonah's example in this case. Follow his example, let him turn back to God, but don't leave your calling here. And then a little bit of story on Jonah, right? So wait patiently for your Lord's judgment. Don't be like the man in the whale who called out in distress. If his Lord's grace had not reached him, he would have been left abandoned and blame-worthy on a barren shore. But his Lord chose him and made him one of the righteous. So then in a quick little nutshell, that's the Jonah story, right? The disbelievers almost strike you down with their looks when they hear the Quran, they say, he must be mad. So this goes back to the earlier part where there's an understanding that just preaching is becoming dangerous and he's being called names, but truly is nothing other than a reminder for all people. So it's just, and the core message is the same as all the prophets. There are some differences in ritual and practice, the way people pray, when they, all those types of like important things, but sort of secondary things to core belief. Core belief is belief in your Creator, loving your Creator, and showing your love in your Creator by loving His creation. So again, this is nothing but a reminder for all people. So that's chapter sixty-eight. So we had, you know, at the beginning, some comfort for the prophet, that he's not going crazy because he's feeling that himself. There's a story that helps put some of these concepts of the agricultural people. And then there's this conversation back and forth with the idolaters basically in town, asking them rhetorical question after rhetorical question. So this sort of technique of rhetorical questions being guided toward either the people in town or we can always take it for ourselves, like, it's, I think there's always a danger in reading scripture and saying like, oh, this means those people. It does, but it's also directed, I mean, scripture is supposed to be for all time and place. So to read it for yourself and say like, is there a way that this is addressing me? Is there, is there something I am becoming wayward of? It could be fame, wealth, career, whatever it is. You know, we have our own, you know, idols, challenges, distractions, however you want to call them in our lives here. So I think that's one of the, and I think all people fall, can fall prey to that, to read scripture and say like, oh, scripture is saying those people, sucks for them. Good thing I'm with camp A, we're on team A. But we're sort of, the reality is we're all on team A and team B. At times we are this way, at times we're that way, and to sort of be aware of that. So what has come up in some of these questions are these questions of qadar, right? Qadar was something we talked briefly about last time, which means sort of God's decree, God's will, God's plan, God's power, things like that. So this was in our second session, in chapter one, in the last verse of chapter one, verse seven of chapter one. It says, "The path of those who have blessed, those who incur, no anger will not run astray." So if we take the position that God, God's plan encompasses everything. So I get into an accident that was will to happen, and it's sort of my, my challenge, my test, how I reacted to that. Rather than what actually happened. So let's take that position for the moment. So then what is, what's anger in that world? What do you feel anger is?
Why did the person hit my car or why?
Yeah, so.
Too bad on the other guy?
Well, so we get anger when things don't go the way that we would like them to, right? Whether it's traffic, a spouse, a kid, whatever. Like, I wanted it to be this way. It's not that way, whatever it is. And so that frustrates me, or makes me angry.
You don't necessarily have to be angry at a person.
Right.
Because simply the anger that this happened.
Yeah. You can be frustrated at the situation at large.
Also, it's a YV.
And a YME, yeah. Why is that person getting the promotion? Not why, why am I, why am I in the slow lane? Why is that lane moving?
Does that bring back then both a sense of guilt and a sense that, what did I do wrong for God to make a bad thing happen to me? Since it is God's will. You know, however, what have I done wrong? Or getting really mad at God because he did something. I mean, he willed something bad against me.
Right. So, so, so I think people will often ask this, but Muslims, I think people in general will ask this question. This thing that I didn't like, or most of us don't like, happens to me. And so, why is this happening to me? Is it a punishment? What did I do wrong? Those types of questions are, are not uncommon. But scholars, and Muslims who, I think, who get to a, for lack of a better word, a higher state, tend to not ask that question, but maybe will ask the question, and it's like, what, what, what can I learn from this? What can I benefit from this? Like, if God's plan, if everything happens by God's plan, and God is loving, and God is good, and God is just, then there's some, there's some benefit in this plan, right? So, I'll give an example of myself. So I used to work in finance. I really liked it. And then, you know, I, I, I was not able to find the next role in the industry. And it was very frustrating for a long period of time. And, one of the things that gave me, it gave me a lot of time in my hand while I was figuring out the next thing to do. But, I would have, I, I can't imagine myself having transitioned to this volunteer. Turn on a switch and saying like, oh, I'm going to do this. So, you know, losing opportunities in that lucrative field, conventionally is a bad thing. And, and it was very frustrating for me at times to go through that, because it didn't happen in a year. It took like, five or six years for me to like, I was constantly trying to find opportunities. Even though opportunities are opening up in sort of all these community world activities. But I was just like, that, that stuff you do on the weekends on the side. I need like, a real job. So, redefining what is good, what is bad, right? So if, if we look through the lens that God's plan encompasses everything, that, that God's plan isn't necessarily the negative. It's just, there's a, there's a point of trial. And so sometimes Muslim preachers will use a thing like, like exercise, or working out. Working out, for most of us, is not something that's fun. But, there's, there's a benefit that comes from it, right? Now we sort of know more details, like, oh, the muscle breaks down. So there's actual physical pain in working out, but then the muscle grows back stronger. So there's those types of things. You know, I sometimes use the example of, of things you don't know you need. So, my dad, when I was like, three years old, he would make me do times table. Not three years, sorry, third grade. Three years old, we're doing cats. But third grade, I remember doing times tables, and like, it felt torturous to do times tables at, at third grade. But, you know, in the subsequent years, there was a huge benefit in that, that without having to like, think about it, I could do this thing. So there was, there was a difficulty, there was a pain, there was something I didn't like. There was a test, whatever you want to call it. So there's some challenge that had some benefit, that I did not have the ability to appreciate or see. Now, my dad did. So if we sort of extrapolate that, that the challenges that we have aren't necessarily punishments, but there's something that will help us see something better. I don't know, I think I shared with you briefly his story. So, one of my friends and teachers was the former chaplain at Princeton University, a guy named Swahib Solhan. He passed away about a year and a half ago of cancer. He was 40. And in his last year, he did a series of blogs, and then he did a few interviews about, about that. And, one of the ones that, I mean, all of it is really beautifully done. But, one of the things he did in one of his last posts was, he had some sort of rare type of, I think it was a file of like, duct cancer, or something like that. And there was quite a bit of pain into it, sometimes too. And, I think somebody, I don't know if it was a relative or a close friend, had come over and saw him in the difficulty, and really sort of like, lashed out at, not like verbally, but just was like, oh, this, this is awful, this horrible disease. And it's just like, and, and he, he sort of didn't take it that way anyway. And he, he makes the argument, he, he shares that the disease had sort of become a very intimate companion of his. He uses that terminology, and he said, it was the way like, you know, you could pick on your little brother or sister, but if anybody else did, you became very defensive. And so he became sort of, he was, he was such a, such a thoughtful, elevated individual, that he didn't sort of lash out at this person. But he sort of internally became a little defensive toward this thing. Because it was given to him by God, this disease. And there's some benefit in it. And he's seen some of the benefits, because he's appreciating, he's thinking about God more. There are things that are clear for him about the ways of the world. There's definitely sadness. I mean, he had just, um, they had just adopted a child, so about a year or two before he was diagnosed. So, to miss, I don't know, growing up with a child, his wife, for like, a decade. So there was things he was sad for, but, but he was also seeing that he was growing spiritually very quickly because of this test. And so, how could he, and he, so he couldn't be sort of angry or upset at it, even though it was difficult. So I mean, that's not for everybody. I mean, he, he sort of got to that point on his own, right? So I think these things are always cautious. These are beautiful stories, and they're important, and then, we can share them, but when somebody's going through something, we sort of have to make a judgment call. Are they in a place to hear something like that or not? So those are, those are types of stories that kind of help explain what this idea of qadar is, and trying to like, holistically accept it. That doesn't mean you just lay back and take it. I mean, he did chemotherapy, he changed his diet. You do what you can as you address that challenge, right? So, if we see any justice in society, it's not to say like, well, that's part of God's plan, da-da-da. No, it's part of God's plan, but it's also part of God's plan to put it in front of your face, to then see, how do you choose to behave in the face of that challenge?
Do Muslims believe that everything that happens is God's plan? I mean, just blanket.
So, so that's, I think that's some, the primary mainstream Sunni belief. I, I don't, I haven't studied Shia theology as much, so I don't know. There are some important differences and nuances in Shia theology, so I'm not sure. And then B, among Sunnis, there is some gradation of, of these things of, of God's plan, because there's different schools of theology and schools of thought. And then C, how do like, actually lay Muslims, like, not everybody studies this stuff, right? So, people sort of imbibe it from their culture. So we'll, we'll see some videos about that, that I think, some Muslim Americans in, don't see that as much. They, they see more of their human volition. Because we live in a society, I wouldn't even say so much as Christian, as just, is, we, we, we have, we feel we have a lot of agency in our world, right? Like, 100 years ago, there was no air conditioning, there was no thermostat. Like, it got cold, it got cold, and you knew it. Right now, we can control the thermostat, we can control this. We have a lot of seeming agency in our world. And I think when we live like that day in, day out, I think it affects our sort of theological outlook. So I think if you're a farmer, you feel that you are at, you're at the mercy of God's will. Your, your livelihood is very much out of your control. You, you make your efforts, but there are things that are beyond your control. I think, well, those of us who live sort of modern urban suburban lives, that, that can be harder to discern, because we're constantly, yeah.
I guess when the power goes out.
Sometimes, yeah.
Oh, what influence does the devil have?
Good question. So, the devil has as much influence as we choose to give him. So there's, I, I don't know where, I'll have to maybe look it up. There, there's a, a verse in the Quran that sort of is a little excerpt from Judgment Day, that somebody did something that they're being held accountable for, and they're like, yeah, but he made me do it. And the devil is like, I didn't make anybody do anything. God, you know what powers you allowed me to have. So I don't have the power to make anybody do anything. I made some suggestions. I made, I gave them some ideas. They ran with it. And that, that's, that's really what it is. So like, and, and the same thing like, with Adam and Eve in the garden. In the Islamic tradition, he doesn't make Adam and Eve. He gives them suggestions. He can say tricks them, but he uses verbiage, right? He doesn't force them to do anything. He doesn't have the ability to force. But he has the ability to distract, to, to mess with your thinking, only if you allow for it, right? So it's, it's a guy that sort of talks in circles. If you choose to listen to him, you, you sort of start thinking in circles. You know, I don't know if you guys have read, or read as a group, the, the Screwtape Diaries? C.S. Lewis's Screwtape Diaries?
Not as a group, no.
Have you read those? Yeah. I mean, that, so, the, the Protestant chaplain in Swarthmore, that was their reading for Lent last year. So, so we picked, we all picked it up. And I thought it did a really fantastic job of, it was so close. I, I don't know where the differences would be in Islamic sort of theology and thinking, like, there, there are these beings that sort of plot and think, but all they have is ways to distract you and try to remove you. But they don't really have the ability to actually do anything to you. So Islamic sort of spiritual anatomy would be, there's a heart is the center of, of your volition, your spiritual heart. And, there's different things that influence that heart. It can be that roof, that, that breath of God that's within you, that's a positive influence. There can be sort of your, your ego. And that can be positive or negative, depending on what's the state of your ego. And then there can be positive outside influences, or it can be negative outside influences, like, Satan, or things like that. But you have sort of, you have agency onto what you allow to affect your heart. Sometimes we might not feel it, but it, it can be sort of a subtle slide too. Like, we can choose what we listen to, or what we choose to watch. And that, that influences us on what we think is normatively okay. You know, it can be gradual, like, we watch this, now that, we watch that. Now it's okay to watch this. And then your heart slides a different way. Or you watch something positive, or you listen to something positive, or you spend time with people who are positive. So those are ways to understand that, yeah.
Good question. When you spoke of Koran quote, the devil or Satan, you said he.
Yeah.
Is, is there a general sense of masculinity, or, I mean, in the, in the Muslim tradition in that way?
I think, gets referred to as he. I, I don't know if he is actually a gendered being or not. Maybe, um, but, but yeah, he, he's always generally referred to with like, the masculine pronoun when it's used. Otherwise, just called out by name. So, in, in the text, there'll be, there'll be two names for him. Iblis, which was his name before his fall, so to speak. And Shaitan, so like Satan. There's also a word called Shayatin, which are sort of his minions. His, his partners, his supporters, whatever you want to call them.
Does it also suggest that, that the devil is under God's will?
Yeah, I mean, God, God has power over everything. So, the fact that God has allowed him to continue and continue to do whatever he does is, is sort of by God's, if God chose to, he'd shut it down, right? And, so that's, you can call it God's will, or by God's allowance, or something like that. So, I wanted to like, so we have an expression in, in sort of contemporary, modern language, right? So, if somebody passes away at a relatively young age, if somebody dies at 30 or 40 or whatever, we'll say they're gone too soon, or they passed away before their time, something like that, right? I don't know if I've shared this story here. Like, I remember talking to my dad, and he was like, he couldn't understand that saying. Because in his theological upbringing, nobody can die, it's not possible to die before your time. You know, your time is determined by God. That's the only thing that takes away your life. So if you died at three months, you died at three months. If you died at 71 years, you died at 71 years.
Well, it's, it's a lot of quote on suicide.
So suicide's not good. And, there's, there's a lot more work being done on it very recently. Like, there's some, there's a Muslim scholar out in California, whose, whose work I really like. She, she's at Stanford actually, Rania Awan. And, so historically, should say historically, at least culturally, su- suicide was, was a great sin. But then, she makes the, she helps, I don't think she makes the argument. She sort of pulls the argument from classical understanding that there's, there's more to it than that. So for example, there may be people who don't have mental agency. It's one of the prerequisites of, of being held accountable for your action, is you have to have mental agency. So if you're a child, you don't have mental agency, because you don't know, right? As much as we think the four-year-old is like, doing something, they truly don't know. They don't have like, that full agency. And then, sometimes when people get very old, they lose some of that agency too. And there are occasionally people who have that their whole life, right? Where they don't have that mental capability and agency. So, is that somebody who's going through that? And then, then the other piece that I thought was really helpful that she reminded us is that, if somebody has, has gone there, they've gone there out of, generally out of desperation, out of not being able to converse. So it's a communal failure. It's a, not just a family, but a societal failure that like, this person was not able to have, find solace, find conversation, find comfort in family, friends, community, neighbors. Rather than saying, oh, this person is going to burn in hell because they took their life. It's like, we, as a whole town, fail to mentally support. It's like, we, as a whole town, fail to mentally support this person individually. Like little pieces here and there, we all ignored this person, we all, something. And so to take back and take a stand, look at it that way, rather than, because I think culturally, I think it's a lot less so, but maybe a generation or two ago here, like it is in many parts of the world, it was a very stigmatized thing. And pretty stigmatized on the family, on the person, and on their potential salvation and things like that. When it comes to salvation, again, we don't know. We don't know what led them to that moment. Whether they had agency at that moment or not. And and maybe it was driven to by a series of wrongs that were done to them, right? If there was, you know, societal, family trauma that led to that. In God's world, that justice will be, on God Judgment Day, that justice will be brought out. So if somebody was abused to the point of wanting to agree with the world or something like that. So, but.
I, I don't want to bring a big political thing in here, but you know, we do have in the world, and maybe we're not clear of it, but we've got people that are suicide bombers, for example. And my, my sense is that either they believe or they have been told to believe or convinced to believe that they are acting in God's name. Now, the person who has, and they almost always end up doing damage to other people. I mean, they don't commit, it's not like they're just doing it to themselves. So how does, how does, that's not just something that's unique to the Muslim. I mean, we hear more because they're quote unquote, in some people's eyes, the enemy, so we hear about them. But how does that fit into this notion of both God's will and the contempt for, not contempt for, but the, the fact that suicide is not something that's a good thing? That we look upon it as a, something good. But as I said, that might be not what we should be talking about now if we've got.
Um, well, we can talk about it briefly at least. So I think they, first of all, like, it's not correct. But B, they've taken an idea and sort of reinterpreted it for themselves. So there is an idea that to die in, in God's, to die sort of unjustly in God's cause is, is sort of a, um, a granting of heaven. So if somebody, you know, just last, I live in West Philly now, just last night, there was like a shooting at like Fifty Fourth and Market, something like that. At six o'clock in the afternoon. I don't know if anybody passed away from that or not. But let's say, you know, somebody is walking down the street and they get shot as an innocent bystander, as it was saying, right? So to, to die unjustly is to then, to essentially be martyred.
Right.
So. And, and in that case, sort of an innocent bystander, or if somebody comes at you for your, for who you are, that they, they're coming at you, it's sort of a hate crime type of thing, right? So those types of things, if that happens, somebody is, is martyred and they're seen to, I don't know if this is the right terminology, but let's say like instantly go to heaven. And so I think what these people who are coming up with this ideology is like, they're taking that concept and saying, well, I'm going to, and there's some political issue that is frustrating them. And so they choose to then take this concept that, oh, I, if somebody dies in, in the path of innocence, that they will go to heaven. And there's this political frustration that if I throw myself out, we'll make a statement for it, and at the same time, I'm granted this thing. But, but, which I don't quite appreciate why, because it's not a hard thing to understand is like, all these people did it unwillingly. People who have died as martyrs, the whole concept is that you didn't want to die. So it, it doesn't, it's not the same thing. I'll have to dig up other parts of the Quran, but like, there's something along the lines of like, you should never wish for, for death. As much as that is a reality of life. You don't wish for it to happen to you or to others. So it's, for somebody who's thinking like that, it's really in violation of A, the, the basic understanding of what a martyr is. And B, you know, other tenants of the tradition and scripture, who you can sort of choose to ignore.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. So I'm gonna try to, I'm not sure if the video is gonna work here. So this will be a little bit less impactful with the. So anyways, what we'll do, I'll work on the video, so the next time it'll work. In the meantime, what I'll do is go to Surakha. So this is, so there's this, I don't know if there is something like this in the Christian tradition or not. There's this prophet being character named Kither. Kither is sort of a, he's not immortal, but he lives a really, 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 really long time. So he's this, he's a prophet, whether he's human or something else is hard to find out. But he's a prophet of God and he's sort of, in this piece of scripture, he's sort of a teacher of prophets. So here is a story of Kither and Musa, Musa being Moses. So I'll read through it.
What chapter?
This is chapter eighteen. And then we're gonna start around verse sixty-six, chapter eighteen sixty-six. So Moses says to him, may I follow you on the condition that you teach me from what has been taught of sound judgment. So Musa's like, like a junior prophet, I don't know if these are bad terminology to use enough, but he wants, he's like, can I learn from you? You're a prophet of God, I'd like to like be a practice player. And Kither says, indeed, with me you will never be able to have patience. Kither is like, I can't deal with you, you're gonna ask too many questions. How can you have patience for what you do not encompass in knowledge? He's like, you just don't know enough stuff. You're just gonna be too impatient. Moses says, you will find me if God wills patient, I will not disobey you in any way. He said, then, if you follow me, do not ask me about anything until I make it to you about a dimension. So I'm gonna do stuff, you, you can't question me, you can't ask me questions, right? We're just gonna do it, you have to press. So they set out until they embarked on a ship. Kither tore it open and Musa said, Moses says, you have torn it open to drown its people? You have certainly done a grave thing. So Kither is coming around, he sees this boat, a ship or something, and he sort of rips it open and it starts filling with water. Kither says, did I not mention that you will not have patience? So the fact that Moses is, what are you doing? He's like, no, I told you, you couldn't understand this. Moses said, do not blame me for what I forgot. Do not cover me in any matter with difficulty. He's like, alright, alright, sorry, let's go again. They set out, they met a boy, Kither killed him. And Moses said, you have killed a pure soul. For having killed this pure soul, you have done a deplorable thing. And Kither now says, did I not tell you you would not be able to have patience? Moses said, if I should ask you about anything after this, then do not keep me as a companion. You have obtained from me an excuse. He's like, alright, I remember, I'm supposed to just be quiet and just follow along. Let's do this again. So they set out until they came to a town of people. They asked for, for food, but the townspeople refused them hospitality. They found there in a wall about to collapse, so Kither restored it. Moses said, if you wished, you could have taken it for a payment. Kither says, this is a parting between you and me. I'm, I will inform you of the interpretation of what you could not have patience for. Kither is done with Moses at this point. They give you three chances to quietly listen, you can't, so I'm just gonna tell you this right now. As for the ship, it belonged to poor people working at sea. So it intended to cause defect in it, as there was after them, a king who seized every good ship by force. So the, the bigger plan was there's, there's sort of an evil king that is co-opting people's property. And so by taking this out, the king won't get this property. That leads to the then what, then what, right? But this is like a little snippet of God's plan. Kind of saying that this particular negative thing, these people losing their ship, has a different purpose. The purpose is to avoid the bad king from getting hold of this asset. As for the boy, his parents were believers and we feared that he would overburden them by their, by his transgression and disbelief. So we intended that their lord should substitute for them one better in purity and nearer to mercy. So the short answer is that their son was gonna be a bad seed. And God is going to grant them a, a different child who's going to be a better child or a better son, daughter, whatever it is. And as for the wall, it belonged to two orphaned boys in the city. There was beneath it a treasure for them and their father had been righteous. So your lord intended that they reach maturity and extract their treasure as a mercy from the lord. And I did it not of my own accord. That is the interpretation of what you could not have patience for. They're saying, there was buried treasure there, the wall was falling apart, people would find it. So that's why he patched up the wall, so the kids would have access to their assets and wealth at a time when they were adults. Each of these stories then goes on to get more questions, then what, then what, then what? But the point of these three stories is like, a seemingly tragic part of God's plan has some love, benefit, care in God's plan. And so that's, that's the basic story, that what seemingly on the face of it is horrible or negative, has some other benefit or purpose. So I guess we'll pause there. And then next time, there's a couple of videos that sort of show contemporary Muslims living out some of these philosophies or things. It's, it's kind of interesting to see when somebody deals with a tragedy, what's the first thing that comes out of their mouth? How do they behave? And that, that's sort of a live innate theology, I think. I knew this was gonna be a, a long tangent, but it's a good tangent, I think. Like we had a lot of conversation, a lot of back and forth, which is good. And, and this topic, as you guys all know, is endless. So.
But so important.
But so important, yeah. I mean, even if we can't completely wrap our heads around it, it can give us, I should say, at least I can speak for myself. It gives me solace at times when dealing with challenges. If I can wrap that in my head, that there's something better for this or there's a strength that comes out of this, whatever it is, right? Not that I always do, I mean, I get frustrated and angry as much as the next person does.
Thank you.